So that's called the June 3rd Cupertino Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Pledge of the Legion, uh, call, yeah, Pledge of the Legion first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fruein?
Here.
Councilmember Mohan?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here. Yeah, I apologize that the closed session went longer. And I believe we have a closed session report. Thank you.
At tonight's closed session, the council voted to approve a settlement agreement and severance agreement with the former city manager Pamela Wu. A copy of the agreement will be available in the City Hall in the next few days. The vote on the settlement was four to one, with the vice mayor voting against. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have ceremonial items. Proclamation recognizing June as the LGBTQ Pride Month. Where, do we have a presentation or speech?
Mayor, we have Crystal Haney and Danny Castillo from the Santa Clara County Office of LGBTQ Affairs. Welcome.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for coming.
Of course. Thank you for having us. The County of Santa Clara Office of LGBTQ Affairs would like to thank the Cupertino City Council for presenting us with this year's Pride Proclamation. Public recognition of community milestones like Pride is incredibly important, especially when it comes from our local government or government of any level. While Pride is 365 days a year, June is when we remember and celebrate the Stonewall Uprising, a moment when the LGBTQ+ community came together and said no more to coordinated intolerance and hate. It's when the community refused to hide in the shadows and submit to being jailed just for being themselves. They said, "We are people just like anyone else, and we deserve respect and equal treatment in our place of work, from our landlords and neighbors, and to feel safe in the communities we live." As we've moved through tolerance into acceptance and even belonging, it is municipalities and those in local government making policies that have helped drive the societal change at the institutional level. I am an out and proud queer trans woman who has worked in the public sector for 20 years and LGBTQ+ advocacy for 25. I hold multiple identities under the LGBTQ+ umbrella. Those who I call family include LGBTQ+ immigrants from different cultures and from different immigration statuses. I am proud to live and work in a place where our local governments publicly proclaim their support for communities like the city of Cupertino is doing here today. And luckily, in my role with the Division of Equity and Social Justice, I'm a part of a team that coordinates across municipalities to support the health and well-being of our entire multicultural, intersectional community. I am, uh, I am proud to live and work in a place where our local governments publicly proclaim their recognition and support for our communities, like the city of Cupertino is doing here today. Councilmembers, City of Cupertino staff, thank you for working with the Office of LGBTQ Affairs. We look forward to what we can do together in the future.
Thank you. Yes, the city just held a Pride Month flag raising yesterday, and all five council members attended, and we had multiple organizations that provide services to LGBTQI+ community. And we have, the city remains committed to being a welcoming and inclusive community for all, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. So on behalf of the Cupertino City Council, I'm proud to proclaim June 2025 as their LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And it's my honor that we will present the proclamation here. So the proclamation is very long, but I'd like to highlight one paragraph that I made some edits. So the fourth one, courageous LGBTQI+ Americans continue to enrich every aspect of American life as civil servants, peace officers, first responders, service members, and veterans, as educators, scholars, scientists, as doctors and diplomats, and as artists, actors, entertainers, athletes, entrepreneurs, and so much more. So this I added, the civil servants and peace officers and first responders that wasn't there last year. I especially want to thank, recognize the contribution of all of the LGBTQ+ IA+ members who are serving in public agencies. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have a presentation from Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council. It's a presentation on their history programs and technologies and the Firewise USA. And later on today, we have an agenda item on the fire zone.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. Thank you very much for the invitation tonight, and thank you to the general public. It is a lot to cover, and I will do it in a very abridged fashion since we only have a few minutes, but thank you. The Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council has been around as an independent 503(c) nonprofit since 2001. So 24 years, we're not a county agency, but we work very, very closely with all county agencies, OEM, County Fire, our partners Chief Fernandez, and the various agencies that focus specifically on wildfire risk mitigation throughout the county. Next slide, please.
I apologize, I'm having a technical issue. If you, if you'd like to wait one moment, my Zoom crashed on me.
Sure. Or I could forward these slides myself if possible.
Uh, let's see. I think I can, I'll just rejoin really quickly.
Okay. We can roll with the punches.
Okay, it should appear momentarily.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm having, still, uh...
And if not, I can certainly walk through it and glad to make the slides available to the public in the agenda packet, but I certainly want to be mindful of your time.
I'm trying one more time.
Murphy's Law, right? With technology.
Uh, okay. I think what I'll do is I will come down there.
Thank you. Perfect. We have a cover slide. Maybe next slide? Are we able to get to the next slide on the screen or no? Good evening. Are you Kristin?
Yes.
Nice to meet you. If I'm not, I can quickly just walk through it and, okay.
To connect this? I just want to connect my laptop to the screen. There we go. There, should connect it outside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I could, I could advance if it just hit enter. Success. Thank you to the outstanding IT support from the city. I appreciate it. Obviously, this slide is just a reminder that we are in a new era. And unfortunately, I wish I wouldn't say this, but I do expect that we may see more in increasing days like this over the next 20 to 30 years. So very quickly, who is the Santa Clara Fire Safe Council? Again, we are a 501(c)(3), and we work very closely and seamlessly with all of the agencies, and our focus is specifically on wildfire mitigation. And we provide a potpourri of programs, which I'll touch on briefly tonight, but our real core focus is providing leadership on what we call large-scale hazardous fuel reduction projects, things like fuel breaks, escape routes, a project that I'll talk to you about in the next slide. We also lead or help to lead the county's Community Wildfire Protection Plan and coordinate with all the various agencies to update that plan and keep it update, updated, and to make sure that the projects in that plan, the defensible space projects in each of the annexes, of which Cupertino has one, are obviously prioritized and hopefully moving forward with some alacrity. So a couple of our important contributions. Obviously, we're a trusted advisor. We have a number of former trained fire professionals on our board, both retirees from County Fire, other fire agencies, CAL FIRE. They are very well-versed in fuels behavior, large-scale fuels management programs, and in addition, we have quite a number of staff onboard from San Jose State, environmental science majors. We've got a staff of 16 or 17 people dedicated to all sorts of programs and activities. We also work very closely in community education and outreach. It's really important that the community, both Cupertino and throughout Santa Clara County, understand wildfire risk. And equally as important, understand their part, and everyone has a part in reducing their individual risk at the home level, but also at the community level. And we also have a variety of other programs that I'll talk about on the next slide just to manage our time clock. One of our core projects is a current project that has been funded by CAL FIRE. It's about a six-year program. It's called the Los Gatos Creek Watershed Collaborative. It's two grants by CAL FIRE totaling about $15 million, and we are managing about 2,000 acres of wildfire risk reduction in the Los Gatos Creek watershed, in and around both the Lexington and Elsmann reservoirs, not too far here from Cupertino. We're treating 2,000 acres to reduce the fire risk because, as you may know, there's a lot of disease and pathogens as a result of drought stress. There is a history of wildfire, obviously. The Lexington fire was in that footprint back in 1985. And, you know, obviously, there's certainly a high chance that it could burn again, and we're doing our part to work with the various agencies to thin the forest and manage that project. And I would invite the members of the council here to join us at any time to come and take an hour or two tour and see the work that we're doing. We also are the organization that has a practice of technology, where we have a portfolio of technology partners, and we're working in close concert with County Fire. We've installed 70 AI-based wildfire sensors so far throughout the county, 25 on Stanford land, 13 in the Woodside Fire Protection District, 12 in Palo Alto, 20 in Oakland, and just a week and a half ago, the County Board of Supervisors approved the new pilot program for 50 new sensors throughout the county to test the opportunity to perhaps make a larger implementation. So we're going to lead that effort along with our county agencies, and we're managing a number of escape route projects. And what an escape route project is in our world is where we harden the vegetation, meaning we cut it back along the side of the road 15 to 30 feet, depending upon the easement, so that if you have to evacuate quickly, you're not kind of driving through a ring of fire, and hopefully it's a safe evacuation path, and it provides good ingress and egress for emergency response vehicles that have to move towards the scene. One of our core programs is what we call an HIZ. It's called a Home Inspection, Impact Zone Inspection, and that's where we will walk through the residents. We will spend anywhere between 45 to 90 minutes walking them through their property and pointing out where we see risk. Now, we hope to communicate very closely with our friends in the fire department over the next couple of months to determine how we can engage on Zone Zero, which is the new ordinance to make sure that the first five feet from the home out is cleared of any flammable vegetation. But in the end, our HIZ programs will point out where there are risks and opportunities to de-risk a homeowner's property, and then we provide them with a report at the end. I'm more than glad to engage with the council members in more detail post my presentation about how, about how to do or bring more of that here to the Cupertino community. In several communities, we offer rebate programs. For the city of Saratoga and the Saratoga Fire District, we manage what's known as their dead tree programs. So people that actually have dead trees on their property, which could be an ignition risk, we help them remove those dead trees from their property to lower their ignition risk. And for a number of towns in the county, we also manage rebate programs where the residents are optimized to take specific measures to reduce risk, and then the towns rebate them based upon a certain weighted scale of items and hazard risk reduction. We manage that full program, for example, for Los Altos Hills. And again, we'd be more than glad to talk about how a similar program could be introduced here in Cupertino. Very quickly, this is part of our portfolio of technology programs. In the last two and a half years, we've built the capacity to help our partners, whether they be fire agencies, towns, municipalities, introduce new wildfire technology. Much of it, but not all of it, is machine learning or AI-based, and our focus is not in fighting the fire. We leave that to the professionals. Our focus is on early warning and early risk reduction and evacuation and safety platforms. So the N5 sensors I just mentioned are going to be installed throughout the county. We have a partnership with a company called Ladris. They're similar to Genesis and Zone Haven in terms of their evacuation capabilities and, and the things that they can offer in that area. Ora Tech is a satellite-based wildfire technology program. San Jose Water just became our first customer, basically 24/7. The satellite is monitoring their property, looking for ignition potential, and it also has tools to monitor and track wildfire spread. So should there be emissions, right, like the tools that the fire agencies use, it has a capability to look out eight to 10 to 12 hours and anticipate where that fire may go to assist in potential evacuations and other risk mitigation efforts. And lastly, a program Fireside. It's a defensible space software tool that allows individuals, HOAs, and communities to track all of their defensible space actions and allows them to report on that activity if they choose to, to their insurance company, to be able to show them what they're doing on their individual parcel or, for example, at the landscape level, and hopefully that might aid and assist in negotiations with the insurance company relative to everybody's bane and challenge these days, wildfire home insurance. Lastly, I'll close out. I talked to my staff earlier today. I understand that we have our first in-process application for a Firewise neighborhood here in Cupertino. I can't give you any more detail at this time about what neighborhood or where that is geographically, but we manage the Firewise USA program for the county. Technically, we're the county administrator, and we work in close concert with the fire service agencies and CAL FIRE to bring more wildfire communities and Firewise communities in existence. It's a national program sponsored by the National Fire Protection Association, and I'd like to talk more with, obviously, the council members about how we can engage Cupertino in what we believe and what the evidence shows is a real community-level risk reduction capability of Firewise USA. Just real quickly, here's a map of our current Firewise locations throughout the county. At last check, I think we have 27. So not all are shown on this map, but we'd like to have many, many more, and I'm glad to work with Cupertino and the fire agencies to discuss how we can get community meetings to inform you about what Firewise USA is. Lastly, this just shows our core capabilities and our portfolio of services. Our goal at the Fire Safe Council is to innovate, pilot-test new technologies, pilot-test new fuel reduction treatments, and try to innovate and help our partners where we can. Again, we have a close relationship with the fire agencies, and we've got a long history of advocacy and effectiveness in wildfire risk reduction, and I want to thank the council members for your time and courtesy, and I appreciate the opportunity to present. Thank you. And special thank you to your IT team. Outstanding.
And this also shows anything that could go wrong will, will go wrong one time or another. We need to be prepared.
Thank you.
So thank you. I really have a lot of questions, but then I will send those through emails, and then please, I think your slides will be in the written communication.
I appreciate it.
So I'm looking forward to our tour, and maybe the community members can join also. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Yeah. Now, we have the postponement and orders of the day. So I would like to propose to postpone the Finch item. That's item, item nine, yeah. So may I have a, that's my motion. May I have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Yeah, we can just vote.
Do you have discussion or?
Oh, no discussion for postponement.
Okay.
The motion carries with Wong voting no.
Okay. Next, we have the oral communications. City clerk?
Yes, Mayor, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for all communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first-come, first-heard basis, with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may, however, briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask questions, may also ask a question, respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member, wait, I'm sorry. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comment. And Mayor, I'm currently holding four requests to speak in Community Hall, and I just need to, my Zoom crashed, so I will log back on to see if we have any members of the public waiting to speak virtually. But if we could start with those requesting to speak in Community Hall, we have Michael Wong, followed by Harry Neal, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please have your request to speak submitted in the next nine minutes. Welcome, Harry.
Apologies, the speaker that would have gone first requested that I go and said. Good evening, City Council. My name is Harry Neal. I'm a student at Deans College and a member of VTA Citizens Advisor Committee. However, I am speaking in my personal capacity tonight. The council's vote on acceptance of the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study was delayed from tonight to September 3rd. This is unacceptable. Acceptance of the study does not commit the city to any new financial obligations. It does not commit the city to any projects. However, it does push out the timeline for implementing safety improvements. Again, a delay of any kind is unacceptable. Stevens Creek is the most important corridor in the entire county, and it's also a hub of traffic injuries. We need to be making safety improvements as soon as possible, and that is first and foremost what the Stevens Creek Vision Study was. Delaying it not only puts people at risk by not implementing safety measures as soon as they should be, it also threatens Cupertino's relationship with its partners in the city of San Jose, city of Santa Clara, the county of Santa Clara, and VTA. It is also, frankly, a waste of taxpayer money. The Stevens Creek Vision Study Program was funded in $800,000 roughly of taxpayer dollars from the cities of Cupertino, Santa Clara, San Jose, and VTA. By delaying acceptance of the study and potentially introducing the opportunity for things to go wrong through it, that could mean a waste not only of taxpayer dollars, but of staff time as well, something that is all too short these days. I hope to see the item moved up to the soonest possible next council meeting, and I look forward to it being approved then. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. And so Michael Wong, you will not be speaking?
Oh, I'll be speaking sometime now.
Okay, so next we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jonah. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I'm a bit confused about why the previous speaker is going out of order, but it's all right. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I'm going to talk about two things tonight. I'm going to start out with the Stevens Creek Boulevard Corridor Study. I spent two years of my life going to multiple meetings on this. I live a quarter mile from Stevens Creek Boulevard. I've lived there for a long, long, long time. I am glad that this was delayed until September 3rd. I have a tremendous amount of questions about it. There are many different entities and factors involved in this. We have VTA, city of Santa Clara, city of San Jose, the county, roads and airports, and Cupertino, and plus the residents. If you weren't aware, we have a gigantic similar project which is going to be studying the Foothill Boulevard corridor from Menlo Park down to Los Altos, which is coming online. I don't know, I forgot if, oh, it's actually tonight in Los Altos, and then Zoom tomorrow. I find that rather irritating that Los Altos had something during the city council meeting. Well, that's what happens, but I, I really think that we need to take a lot of factors in. VTA has no money. They shut down for two weeks during a personnel strike, as personnel was allowed to, but But they weren't able to even hire extra drivers. We had no bus anywhere in the county for 17 days. I thought it was two weeks, but I heard today it was 17. We can't be... We can't keep planning things when there is no money. There is no budget. That's my major question about what this is. There are so many people demanding different things of Stevens Creek Boulevard. We have SB 79, Wieners trying to take over half a mile out. God knows what that's going to do to transit or the people living along there are going to have to pay for the infrastructure upgrades. Yes, I'm glad you delayed it. I have a lot of serious questions. The other thing is, I'll talk real fast. SB 330, we have five to seven projects in Cupertino that is a long, valuable retail corridors on Stevens Creek Boulevard. We're going to be losing 80,000 square feet of viable retail. We are never getting that back. SB 330 is a flawed bill. It needs to be changed so that we can downzo. I really have questions about Senator Skinner's plans of having SB 330. Why did she do it? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next we have Jonah, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Jonah.
Hello. My name is Jonah Zhang, and I have worked in Cupertino and studied at Deans College for the past two years. And during that entire time, I have relied on public transit primarily to get around. Delaying the vote from June to September is frankly insulting to me and my fellow students who long for a better and safer Stevens Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonah. Next we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Hi, thanks. So I was going to speak on item nine, and I did send some correspondence to you all about that. So I'm understanding it's postponed. I hope it happens soon, and I hope the postponement is so that you can gather more information because I think there's a lot of confusion around things and definitely some misguided statements in some cases. So thank you, most importantly, for even having it on agenda in the first place when this has been talked about for almost a year and you guys have never been involved, which is quite, let's say, embarrassing. And, well, there's a few adjectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And before we move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually, I will check one more time on Michael. Yes, would you like to provide comments? Great, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Michael Wang. I've been a resident of Cupertino for 22 years. And I just want to echo Harry's comments. I oppose postponing that vote to later this year, and I would like to see that moved up. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will move to those speaking virtually. We have Betsy Magus, followed by Jennifer Sheeran, followed by Nori. Welcome, Betsy.
Hi, good evening, Betsy Magus. I am a member of the VTA Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and a resident of the city of Santa Clara, speaking for myself tonight. I am also disappointed that the Stevens Creek Vision Study has been postponed. This does not look to me like a postponement for, you know, basic scheduling kinds of reasons, not at a three-month lead time. And I think... I do not speak for the city, but I think it is fair to say in general that others in Santa Clara are disappointed. When the Stevens Creek Vision Study went to the Santa Clara Council as a study session, the consensus was, why are we only studying this? Why are we not voting? They have since voted to accept it. And I'm disappointed for another reason, which is that Cupertino really has in the past led the way on street safety and active transportation facilities. And, you know, it is... It has been... It seems to me that it has been the standard to meet. And it looks to me very much like Cupertino is moving away from that... From that mindset with the current council. So I would urge you to bring this back sooner if you possibly can. But if you can't, please take the time to understand that the Stevens Creek Boulevard Study was the product of years of input with robust public outreach and meetings and workshops and tours of the corridor on bikes, on foot, and on buses. And it really is not... This... Improving safety really should not be this difficult or this controversial. Improving safety for vulnerable road users improves safety for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Next we have Jennifer Sheeran, followed by Nori, followed by Sima Linskog. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I am speaking tonight as both my emails of May 20th, 2025, and I have not had a response yet. During both council meetings on May 6th, 2025, and May 15th, 2025, Councilmember Wang violated the Ralph M. Brown Act. There were three clear violations during the meeting on May 6th, all related to the remote teleconferencing section of the act. First, he teleconferenced in from Dubai Airport, a location that was not accessible to the general public as he was behind security. Second, his teleconferencing setup did not allow anyone from the public to hear or testify from his remote location. Third, there was no posted public meeting notice in the location as Dubai Airport has strict regulations which do not permit posting any signs, flyers, or other kinds of notices in public areas. During the May 15th, 2025 meeting, there were two clear violations by Councilmember Wang also related to the remote teleconferencing section of the act. First, his teleconferencing setup at the Sheridan Stockholm Lobby did not allow the public to hear or testify at his location as required. Second, there was again no public meeting notice posted in the location as confirmed by the hotel in the letter I sent to the city attorney and council. It should also be noted that it is not possible that Councilmember Wang was teleconferencing in from the hotel lobby as stated on the agenda, as the hotel stated their lobby was undergoing a quote, "full renovation and not available." These violations, now documented with evidence, should mean that any votes, discussion, or actions that Councilmember Wang was a participant in should be reconsidered in a future meeting. I want to read to you the last line in the California Cities Brown Act Handbook. It states, quote, "Agencies that regularly train their officials and pay close attention to the requirements of the Brown Act will have little reason to worry about enforcement. It's clear that one or the other of these things have not happened. I ask that this body follow our state laws and address these violations, and that Councilmember Wang must follow the law in the future, including in all future meetings of the city council, by following the all provisions, every provision of the Brown Act." Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next we have Nori, followed by Sima Linskog, followed by Henry W. Welcome, Nori.
Thank you for this opportunity. Olenka Bialal, who is the CEO and founder of Magical Bridge Foundation, came to Cupertino Quinlan Center as a guest speaker last week. She did a great presentation about Magical Bridge All-Inclusive Playground. Building Magical Bridge Playground is Olenka's own story, who has a daughter with a disability and there was no playground for her to play. Magical Bridge Playground is all ability, all children, and all ages population. Children with disability enjoy interaction with other children. Other children can learn kindness, compassion, and empathy. All children are playing together without any physical and cognitive barrier among them. How beautiful is that? It could be very nice if Magical Bridge Playground could be built in Memorial Park. Memorial Park is ideal location. It is the biggest park in center of Cupertino, next Quinlan Center, Senior Center, preschool in Quinlan Center, and many summer camps in Quinlan Center, and walking distance from Garden Gate Elementary School. There are many families with children in the playground now, but current playground is unsafe. Memorial Park is easy access from Stevens Creek off 85. Magical Bridge Playground bring visitors from other cities to Cupertino, which is good for small businesses. Para Alto Magical Bridge Playground receives almost 50% no-resident use. Magical Bridge Playground was built in Para Alto, Redwood City, Mountain View, Santa Clara, Sunvale, Morgan Hill, and Singapore, and now in New Zealand and Daly City will start construction. Many other cities are requesting Magical Bridge Foundation to build their playground in their cities. Why not in the city of Cupertino? In fact, working with Magical Bridge Foundation is benefit for Cupertino because city can support raising fund and volunteers. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Nori. Next we have Sima Linskog, followed by San R. Welcome, Sima.
Hi there, council members. I'm on the planning commission, but I'm writing today as a resident or speaking today as a resident, I guess. I just... I was on Nextdoor recently, and I saw the incredibly negative comments made by Councilmember Ray Wong on Nextdoor on May 25th, 2025, where he said things like, and I quote, "The active transportation plan is rigged, and we have a situation where 2% of the population is inconveniencing 98% of the population." And saying... And specifically saying that bike lanes should not be allowed on major streets in Cupertino. This is pretty serious. As a sitting council member, it is a Brown Act violation for a city council member to make up their minds about how they will vote on an issue before having a public hearing and listening to all the evidence and public comments. This is because the Brown Act mandates that local government business and deliberations be conducted openly to ensure public access and transparency in the decision-making process. This kind of comment undermines public participation as the Brown Act requires that the public have the opportunity to address every item before it's acted upon by the council. It's also considered a pre-arranged decision, which also violates the Brown Act because a council member is not allowed to predetermine their vote without open deliberation or consideration of public testimony. Given that, as a sitting council member, he has expressed very strong views against ADATP and against bike lanes on major city streets in Cupertino, I'm requesting that Councilmember Ray Wong be required to recuse himself from votes and discussions on all council agenda items, present and future, which address bike lanes on major streets of the city, such as the ATP, the Stevens Creek Boulevard Protected Bike Lines, the Vision Study, Ballinger Road Study, and other similar studies, or he will be in violation of the Brown Act. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sima. And our final speaker with their hand raised before the nine-minute cutoff is San R. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I would reiterate my comments from a few council meetings ago that you're hearing very, very heated comments from members of the public when in fact we can find ways to agree on a number of topics. And so as council members, as problem solvers, as people that can bring the community together, I urge all of us, council members, as well as members of the public, to find the common topics that we can agree on and let us advance Cupertino on those topics. For example, housing. The state laws require us to act on housing. And all of us agree that we need to make our city friendly for sensible housing policies that prevent the change in character of our single-family home neighborhoods while adding net housing units to our city. Retail. All of us can agree that we want to make Cupertino a place that we can go spend quality of life time in, and that means saving our retail. And what can we do in terms of policies to save our retail? What actions can we take on retail? All of us can agree that we want to have a city that's free of crime. But we can go even further than that, and we can agree that we want to have safe streets. And we may have a different vision for safe streets, but all of us want safe streets. Car drivers want safe streets too. And so do the pedestrians. And yes, so do the bicyclists. And the root cause of lack of safe streets is lack of following the law on traffic matters. And that means speeding. It means distracted driving. It means red light violations, stop sign violations, not yielding to pedestrians, not yielding at red light on right turns. And these are not solutions that you can solve with yesterday's technologies, namely concretes in the blocks. You cannot put enough concrete across the city despite having quarries to our west side to solve these problems. And we need to pivot towards the use of technology that really solves the problem at the root of it, which is errant car drivers. And all of us can agree on that. So let's find the topics we can all agree on. Let's tackle the common issues. And let's recognize that even those that are claimed to be against bike lanes are not against bike lanes. They are looking for corridors that make for enjoyable biking. And yes, there will be busy streets like McLellan where you need to have that out to school. So let's not attack and make this a bigger issue than it is. Let's find things that we can agree on. Let's solve problems. And I urge council, you can show leadership here. Work across the aisle, work with other sides that are perceived to be other sides from the public, and let's solve the common problems. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And I mistakenly called on Henry W. However, you did not have your request to speak submitted before the nine-minute cutoff. So apologies for that. And Mayor, there are no additional requests submitted before the nine-minute cutoff.
Okay, thank you. So, city attorney, could you address whether the council members are allowed to express policy opinions before policy is being voted on?
Absolutely. And perhaps I'll also address the other two Brown Act violations that were alleged during public comment. It's an incorrect interpretation of the Brown Act to suggest that a council member cannot form a decision about an item on the agenda or express their opinion in public about an item on the agenda. Certainly, that's what they are elected here for, is to represent the people and to form opinions about public policy and to stand for those opinions. It certainly is useful for them to listen to public comment, but that doesn't mean that public comment necessarily must be able to change their opinion. Only in a scenario where you're actually hearing, having a public hearing on perhaps a development project where it's important for due process that the council member be or the planning commissioner be, you know, unsettled on their position as to how they'll vote. But for standard agenda items, that's absolutely not the rule. As for the times when Councilmember Wong participated remotely, I'll start with the instance in Dubai. It's my understanding he was in a public area, not behind security in Dubai, that he attended the meeting as required in a space that was open to the public and that he did post a sign, you know, with the agenda, and that no public speakers were there. At some point during that meeting, the meeting went longer and the councilman had to exit the meeting. And at that point, we shut down the meeting at great inconvenience. So we abided by the Brown Act to the fullest extent. In terms of his time in Las Vegas, he was in the hotel lobby. We were able to... Pardon me?
Stockholm.
Stockholm, forgive me. In Stockholm. He was in the lobby. We were able to see the lobby. He had the notice posted. There were no public speakers there. If there had been, he would have gone off in his, you know, personal connection to the computer to invite the public speaker or participant in. Since nobody was there, you know, using his personal connection was perfectly reasonable. So in neither case was the Brown Act violated. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And it has been my policy to correct any misinformation in the public comment. So this... I think some members of the public has been misled to think the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study is about safety of the corridor, which is not the case at all. You can look at the Vision Study website, the resolution approved by the council in 2019, and all the other city councils involved are specifically state the study is about transit efficiency, I quote from the document, and the street scape improvement. And regarding high-capacity transit... And regarding high-capacity transit service along Stevens Creek and Two Eighty Corridor. So that's the purpose of the study. As for safety, the city already adopted the Vision Zero Plan, which the Backped Commission is implementing, and also we have adopted the local road safety plan. So those plans address safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. I'd also like to point out that we are light years ahead of our neighboring cities. We do not have on-street parking on Stevens Creek Boulevard, and we have approved a separated Class Four bike lane to extend all the way down past Danza Boulevard. There was one comment about the, having a Magical Bridge Playground potentially at Memorial Park. I would like to remind the public that next week, we have our all-inclusive playground ribbon-cutting on Friday the thirteenth at Jolly Man Park from one to two P.M., and we wish everyone to come out and join us for that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the reminder about the opening. We are excited about that. Then next, we will go to the consent calendar, items three to five. I don't believe anyone has pulled an item.
No, mayor, I have not received any requests to pull any items for discussion. May I make one comment? I did submit a desk item regarding item number four, approval of the twenty minutes. It was a minor correction, and I submitted it, you should have, it should have been emailed to the council and posted to the website, albeit a bit late.
Yeah, thank you. So, and I'll make a motion to-
Mayor, would you like a public comment?
Oh, right, public comment, yeah. Public comment on the three consent, consent agenda items three, four, five.
I see one hand raised from Henry W. Oh, they lowered their hand. Okay, I see no hands raised for this, no request to speak for this item, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda items three, four, five with the desk item submitted by city clerk.
Second.
Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next, we have public hearing, item six, approval of the renewal of nineteen ninety-two storm drain fee with no increase, and the renewal of the two thousand and nineteen clean water and the storm protection fee with two-point-three-eight percent increase. We have staff presentation.
Yes, mayor, I would like to introduce Ursula Sarova, Environmental Programs and Sustainability Manager, to begin her short presentation.
All right, am I audible? All right. Good evening, Mayor Chow, council members. I am Ursula Sarova, Environmental Programs and Sustainability Manager, here to talk about the renewal of the city's two stormwater fees, which we bring to council annually this time of year. So Cupertino is required under permit to keep our stormwater clean. The permit is called the San Francisco Bay National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, AKA the Municipal Regional Permit, and it covers seventy-six agencies in the Bay Area and establishes requirements for stormwater pollution prevention. It is over seven hundred pages long, grew out of the Clean Water Act, and includes about twenty categories of compliance that the city must adhere to. The city has two property-based fees in place to support our compliance activities. These fees require an annual renewal process in advance of the county assessing the fees via the property tax bills. The first fee was adopted in nineteen ninety-two, and the second fee was adopted in two thousand and nineteen. Rates for the fees are based on land use, as shown here. Both the fees appear on property tax bills, as shown here. And here are just a few examples of the preventative, responsive, and educational activities which ensure our compliance with the permit. This work includes responding to spills, conducting annual preemptive inspections, reviewing building plans, and coordinating installation of new trash capture devices. Other activities are hands-on learning at McClellan Ranch Preserve, education during outreach events, and administrative work to gather and track data and report out annually as required by the permit. As part of our work, we also conduct two volunteer-driven creek cleanup events each year, and staff do additional cleanups in areas less accessible to volunteers. We have our own Vector Truck, which we use to clean and maintain over twenty-one-hundred storm drains, many of which are fitted with special devices to keep trash from entering the system and being carried to our creeks. Our program also covers half the expense of street sweeping in the city. To further assist with compliance, we are part of the regional organization called the Santa Clara Valley Urban Runoff Pollution Prevention Program, which conducts required water sampling, on-land visual trash assessments, and extensive guidance for compliance and for the preparation of, and submission of, our extensive annual report that we submit to the Regional Water Board. The fees also funded the project to assess the outfalls in the city to identify those that may need repair or maintenance. In two thousand and nineteen, as part of establishing the newer fee, council approved a cost-share program that is available to low-income property owners, which provides a twenty percent rebate upon approval and then a twenty percent reduced rate on their bill going forward. An additional one resident qualified for this program since last year, bringing the total to two hundred and seventy-seven participants. People who want to apply for the cost-share program or recertify can do so at Cupertino.org/watercostshare. The annual process concerns only budget and activities related to Fund Two Thirty Environmental Management Creek, Clean Creek Storm Drain, which is for activities related to operating the Nonpoint Source Pollution Program. It is distinct from Fund Two Fifteen Storm Drain AB sixteen hundred, and it is also distinct from Fund Two Ten. The Nonpoint Source Program and Storm Drain Maintenance revenues and expenses are audited annually during the regular external audit. Additionally, we worked with finance staff to establish an agreed-upon procedures audit by calendar year of expenses and revenues. The AUP audits for calendar years twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four are in your packet, and no exceptions or concerns have been noted by the auditors. The nineteen ninety-two fee has no mechanism for increase, so it will remain the same. The two thousand and nineteen clean water and storm protection fee does allow for an annual increase up to CPI with a maximum of three percent. We recommend an increase of two-point-three-eight percent, which matches CPI to the two thousand and nineteen fee for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Increasing this fee by two-point-three-eight percent would increase revenue by a bit over twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the coming fiscal year, which is about one dollar and twelve cents per year additional for an average single-family home parcel. So tonight's recommended actions are to renew the ninety-two fee with no increase and renew the two thousand and nineteen fee with a two-point-three-eight percent increase. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any question from the council? Council member more here.
Thank you, Ursula. I had a quick question on one of your tables in the staff report. So you project a deficit at the end of this year, next year?
I actually don't project a deficit for the end of this fiscal year, because we'll probably come in under budget, we anticipate coming in under budget. But for next fiscal year, we probably would exhaust-
So the six hundred and fifty-four thousand two ninety-one negative balance is for next year?
Correct.
And, and so, but you're still not proposing a rate change?
We're proposing as much rate change as we can, which is the two-point-three-eight percent on the two thousand and nineteen fee only.
Which will result in a negative fund balance at the end of next year?
Correct.
And then what is our recourse at that point?
We go to the general fund to bridge deficit gap. And we, you know, we do try to trim as much as we can, but this is our obligation under the permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Ursula, for the presentation. You mentioned that the fee covers one-half of the street sweeping? So is that something that if need be, that the full cost could be covered by the general fund? Or is it, is it somewhere written that it must cover half of the street sweeping?
No, it's not written, so other funding could be explored.
Okay, thank you.
So, you mentioned that the, the fee that we can increase, that is three percent, but then you are increasing by three, two-point-three percent. So, but that's the max that can be increased for that?
It's up to CPI with a maximum of three percent.
Oh, okay, but CPI is three percent.
CPI was two-point-three-eight for the period calculated.
Okay. And then for those people who are receiving discount, are they going to also get, see an increase in their fee, but then with a twenty percent discount?
Correct.
So they will see a two-point-three-four-eight percent increase, but they'll get twenty percent discount?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go to public comment.
Mayor, I currently have no requests to speak for this item.
Any more discussion, or could I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve the renewal of the nineteen ninety-two storm drain fee with no increase and renew of the two thousand and nineteen clean water and storm protection fee with a two-point-three-eight percent increase.
I'll second it.
Any comment? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, mayor. And do you also move the recommended action to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash oh-three-six and twenty-five dash oh-three-seven?
Yep, I'll have that. Thanks.
And does your secondor accept that?
Yes. Thank you. So let's vote.
I'm sorry, I missed that. There was, Vice Mayor just clarified the recommended action.
Correct.
Yeah.
Adding the second part.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, item seven, we have the CAL FIRE recommended fire severity hazard zone update. The city is required to update our municipal code. So, do you know?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, we have Ben Foo, Director of Community Development, here to introduce the team. And I would also highlight, we do have Hector Estrada from the Santa Clara Fire Department as well here to support any questions after the presentation. And this, with this item, you know, the team will go over the background on why we are adopting these maps, the implications, and some of the outreach that has already been done around this item. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ben.
Thank you, Acting City Manager Kapoori. My job a lot easier right there, but thank you. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and city council members. Like Acting Manager mentioned, we're here to present you the proposed modification to municipal code as a result of this fire severity hazard zones adoption. With us, obviously, we have, just reiterate, we have Chief Estrada here with us. And during the presentation, we'll be Assistant Director of Community Development, Luke Connolly, with Pugh Gosh, Planning Manager, and of course, I'm available for any questions. With that, I'll just hand off to Luke and Chief.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Good evening, mayor, council members. We'll try to go through this fairly quickly at a high level. Like I said, we have a number of staff here, I think, that could answer any questions you may have. So we will start off with what is the fire hazard severity zone designation discussion, or the fire map. Some background on this is California Department of Forestry and Fire Prevention, or CAL FIRE, issues recommendations that take the form of a fire map on fire hazard severity zones. This is required by state law. It's been a little over fifteen years since this has been updated. So, in, on February twenty-fourth of this year, the city of Cupertino received its recommended map showing the city's fire hazard severity zones. The city's map hadn't, has, well, the current map that is still in effect dates to two thousand and nine, so it's been about sixteen years for the city. One of the state law requirements of receiving the map is the date it is available, February twenty-four. Cities statewide have a hundred and twenty days in which to adopt the map. You also have to have made the map available to the public for thirty days, which we did the first week of March, so the map's been available for about ninety days at this point. Little more background is the, what's called the responsibility areas. There's two. There's the state responsibility areas, which is essentially most of the state's undeveloped and forested land. It's about over thirty million acres, the state's about a hundred million acres, so close to a third of the state falls into that. Those were the first areas where CAL FIRE developed fire hazard severity maps, and that was in nineteen eighty-one, about a year after a major Southern California fire, the Panorama Fire occurred. A little over a decade later, you had the Oakland Hills Fire, where you had a more urbanized area, you hit, a lot of structures were lost, human lives as well. And normally, as this slide indicates, a lot of times in the wake of fire disasters, you get legislation, which is fairly unsurprising, that analyzes the issue of fire safety more so. The year after the Oakland Hills Fire, you had what was called the Bates Bill that was passed, which then got CAL FIRE to look at local responsibility areas, which are largely cities, could be agricultural lands, but essentially more developed areas or areas that are less susceptible to extreme fire hazard. So that was in nineteen ninety-two when that went into effect, where you had local jurisdictions designating what was just then very high fire hazard zones. There are now three, very high, high, and moderate, which we'll look at the maps on that shortly. In two thousand and twenty-one, after you had had fires in Santa Rosa, Paradise, and other areas in the state, you had additional legislation that required the local areas to then adopt maps that showed all three of the fire hazard designations, very high, high, and moderate. Again, this is our first update in about sixteen years. So now we can go to the existing map. This is what's currently in the city's municipal code and is referred to the Wildland Urban Interface Map. So the map shows really the western portion of Cupertino. The area on your extreme left is really the most hilly area, and the large yellow is essentially the high-fire hazard area. The small portion down at the south end of the city, or towards the bottom of the slide, is very high. So you notice it's a pretty negligible part of the total area. It's a little over fifty acres of what is about nineteen hundred total acres on that map. And we'll look at how this is changing through the map that CAL FIRE has provided us in February. This map shows the entire city, so it's at a little different scale. The light gray area in the middle is the majority of Cupertino, which is the largely flat area. The areas on the left or to the west of the city are the hillsides. Now you notice the three pronounced colors. You've got red, which is a very high-fire zone, orange, which is high, and yellow, which is moderate. And not surprisingly, the closer you are to the hills, the steeper the terrain, the more likely you are to be in a very high-fire hazard zone. So the total acreage between the two thousand and nine map and this has not changed much. It's gone up, I think, about a hundred and eighty acres. But the biggest change is that the very high-fire hazard zone, which made up a small portion of the existing map, is now very high as really the majority of the area, as shown in red. Without getting into all the details, and I would suggest if you haven't, if you want to learn more about this, CAL FIRE's website is a really great resource. It has a lot of videos, a lot of information on what do the different zones mean, and goes into pretty good detail on this, especially if you have a property that is in one of the zones. I would just say to keep it simple is you largely have two components. If you're in a fire hazard safety zone, you have how are you going to manage your property in terms of keeping your landscape in check, things such as not having dry limbs in close proximity to your house, or overhanging it. having branches that could be near a source that could ignite and start a fire, such as a chimney or a stovepipe, you know, through weed abatement, some pretty basic things to maintain defensible space on your property. So those are really the areas, and we'll move into more detail if you have questions on that. Where it's largely from 100 feet in, and the closer you get to your home or structure, you want to have an even higher level of not having something there that could cause or spread a fire. The second area really is, and this is something that, you know, fire hazard zone maps don't look at. They're very much focused on just the terrain and the property. They don't even take into account things such as property lines. They're looking at how likely are you to be in a fire hazard severity zone. So the second piece of this also is that if you are in one of those zones, it's not saying you can't build, but what it's saying is you could be subject to different building standards. So having ignition-resistant building requirements for homes, major new construction, or even major remodels could be in play. We could go to the next slide now. Also, for the high fire zone, you'd have wildfire-resistant construction standards, which are at a slightly lower level than, something that would be non-ignition. But again, the standards apply pretty much across the board, and I believe currently in the city's code, high fire, very high fire, and high fire are treated the same. So right now, that was per 2009. If you're in a fire hazard severity zone, you're treated the same under the building code. Also, in both the very high and high fire zones, per state law, you would have to conduct a real estate disclosure saying that you are in these zones at the time of sale of a house. What we've done since receiving the map in late February is get the map posted. That was done in early March. We provided information on the update and provided residents with a comment form, if they had any comments they wanted to send to the city. There have been presentations earlier at the city council by, I believe, Chief Estrada and Santa Clara County Fire Staff, and also at the city's Public Safety Commission. And as of a couple weeks ago, notices were mailed to all residents that were either in the 2009 area or the 2025 area. Most of those are the same properties, but some properties were removed, some properties were added. That was over 3,000 mailed notices. So what this map shows is the orange area essentially merges moderate, high, and very high. So that's just really the 2025 map, showing this is all the affected properties. The green area with the hatch diagonal lines is the 2009 map, or the map that's currently in place, the Wildland Urban Interface Map. So the total area of these is not terribly different. There's about 180 acres more total land in the orange area. But you can see some of the residential properties in Oak Canyon at the north in the green area don't have the orange designation. They're no longer within a fire hazard safety zone. Whereas some of the land sort of in the center of that, as you move towards, I think, pretty much going right up to, say, Monovista High School, and I believe Kennedy Middle School, those areas have now sort of moved towards the east, so you're taking in a larger area within the fire safety hazard zone. But overall, the biggest change is there's more properties considered very high compared to 2009, but the acreage itself hasn't changed all that much. Okay, so what do the maps mean for cities throughout the state? What it means is cities do not have the ability to either downgrade properties, say, take a property that's designated very high and make it higher moderate, or to remove properties that have been designated in any zone. But what you can do is you could add properties. So if you felt there was a basis for, there's some areas that should be included in these zones and aren't, or areas that were either moderate or high, they could be upgraded to a very high standard. So essentially, you can add, but you can't subtract. The staff's recommendation on this is to follow the CAL FIRE recommendation and keep that map with really one change. We're not adding any properties, but where there are properties that have more than one designation, because a lot of these sites are large, so some of them fall within very high and high, or high and moderate. What we are recommending, and this is what CAL FIRE staff has also recommended we do, is that you have one single designation per property. So if you're high and very high, we're considering you very high. If you're moderate and high, you'd be considered high. So what we can do is show the next map, which, this is the map we're recommendation, we're recommending is, there again, no additional parcels, but you see the red area is now slightly larger because a number of parcels fell within very high and high. They are now reflected on this as just very high. So that is the recommendation we're going with. It does not, again, add any properties that were not already designated by CAL FIRE. So the staff's recommendation then is to conduct the first reading that would result in amending the two chapters within the Fire Code in Chapter 16, 1674 and 1640, which would also include the new map showing the fire zone classifications reflected as a single zone per property. And that concludes our presentation. And in addition to Chief Hector Estrada, we also have our Chief Building Official, Sean Hatch, tonight. So hopefully, between everybody, we can answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you for the wonderful presentation. A few questions. There's a consistent conversation that the fire hazard severity zones do not impact insurance rates. What's the story behind that? Because I know a lot of public have asked us about that.
Yeah, I think it is a pretty common question, and there's, again, there's a lot of information on CAL FIRE's website on this. So insurance companies typically use what would be called a risk assessment map.
Yep.
So while it may sound similar, again, the map CAL FIRE has prepared is really looking at zones regardless. What's your slope? What, how much forested areas around you? How much ignitable material would there be? What are the prevailing winds like? That type of information. My understanding of the insurance risk maps is they go well beyond that. So they're going to look at factors like, have you cleared your property? Do you have anything dangerous on your property that could ignite or cause a fire? Construction type of your home? Do you have fire sprinklers? Do you have Class A roof? Do you have a metal roof? Do you have all of your vent screens so you're not going to have embers enter your house? So it goes into a far greater level of detail and could focus on individual sites and the construction on that site. Whereas the hazard map is, again, is really looking at the terrain.
And do zones with very high, you know, risk receive more resources?
Resources in what way?
You know, money, education, prevention, hardening?
That, I really wouldn't know.
Okay. And what's the total population impacted? You said there was more acreage, but do we know if more homes were included?
Population, I do not know. The acreage is, I think, about 2,100 acres. For the new map, it was a little like 1,900 and something for the previous map.
And then are there, are there any suggested changes that we also need to add to municipal code, other than just the ordinance? In terms of brush clearance, heights, hardening? Does that get included already, just with the updated map?
I think, yeah, what we're recommending on the attachment that shows the code changes, those are all the code changes we're looking at doing right now.
Okay. And are the Linda Vista properties and the Evillich properties in that zone?
The Housing Element Site at Evillich Court is a very high fire hazard zone.
Yes, okay, as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation as well. I was looking at the California Government Code 51182 that they refer to, and I can see that they talk about the defensible space for the very high fire severity zones. You're five, zero to five feet, five to 30, and then 30 to 100. But what I'm not clear on is if high fire severity and moderate fire severity need to comply with those same defensible space requirements? Or is there, are there different rules for that? I understand there's, the building code seems to line up whether you're in high or very high, if I understood that correctly. And that I don't, with regards to the building code, I don't know what happens if you're in the moderate zone as well. So does someone have an answer for that?
I will be happy to have either Chief Estrada or Chief Building Official, Sean, step up. But I believe right now, moderate does not have enforcement yet. It is coming, is my understanding. And yet, there are different zones. I believe there's Zone Zero, which is five feet and closer to a structure. Then it goes out to Zone One is 30 feet, and Zone Two, 100 feet. But the nuances and requirements of that, I'm sure they could answer better than I could.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I would like to know more about the, when enforcement will happen, because it seems that there may be people that have new requirements that will come as a surprise in the next three years. So I'd like to hear some more about that. Thank you.
I think so, yeah. Great question. I think this is actually one of the things that people really care about. What does it mean to me? And when I've changed, what is, what's going on? And how is it different? So for defensible space, there's a, there's a breakdown of the things that are required. So the, the most impacted, obviously, are the very high. You'll see defensible space listed as one of those things that's required for very high. That's the 100-foot requirement. Here in Cupertino, for those properties that are actually affected, we do have a 100-foot inspection. It's a part of our WUI program. The other West Valley cities are all participating in it as well. What we do is we do a public right-of-way inspection by engine companies. They'll go out looking for those things that flag, are red flags for fire safety. The 10 feet within the chimney, vegetation up against the house, things like that. So those things will get called out. And then we, from the Fire Prevention Division, will go out and follow up on those things. So this is actually the program that we have that impacts not a whole lot of the folks here in Cupertino, but because they are in very high, they get the 100-foot radius or the 100-foot radius inspection. In other jurisdictions, you have the moderate and the high. They get a 30-foot. So there's an opportunity here, especially as we follow through into the fall, to identify properties that you do want to have inspected. There is a, overall, it's a, let's find out where those problems are. Let's give you the information. We follow a pretty strict calendar where in February, you get a notice. In that notice, it tells you exactly what you have to do. There's an opportunity for you to use a QR code, call us, or send an email, or even mail back a tear-off portion that says, I have this property, I'm taking care of it, and it's basically a self-inspection. And then we have a triennial cycle where every property gets inspected every three years. You can also be called out by someone who just notices that there's a significant hazard with regard to the vegetation. And every year, when you get, which is coming up now, the referral for weed abatement, and you have the declaration of hazard, this is the authority in which, under which we actually perform those inspections. And anyone who is not compliant, and really the goal here is to get somebody to get the work done. So if they're actually working with us and they're making progress, they don't get referred. But there is a government code that's already in place that allows for the property to be referred, and it ends up here going to the county weed abatement program. And that's after numerous inspections, and then there's a process that basically gets you, if you continue to be noncompliant, to that point where your property will end up being subject through the county weed abatement to get abatement. So that takes care of, I think, the first question. What was the second part?
Well, I do want to bring up one website that I've been looking at, the ReadyForWildFire.org website, and the Home Hardening Demonstration Burn, showing the five-foot area. Was, it's, if you, for someone who has maybe foundation plantings around your house, and you're, and you don't want to make these changes, I think this video is the one to, one to watch for how important that is. And so my concern was like, in particular with, do we, I believe we had, we're going to have a number of residents that need to clear out the vegetation in the first five feet, and that's the concern I have, because a lot of people do those foundation plantings, rose bushes and whatnot, and that all needs, will need to be removed, correct?
That's correct. So anything that basically combustible vegetation is, is going to be identified in that Zone Zero. So really, the intent here is, for defensible space, it's getting a large fire that's getting close to your home. If it's 100 feet out, getting it to the ground, which is where a lot of the limbing and the other things that you're, you're being asked to do in that Zone Two. And then when you get to the 30 feet, it's interrupting the flow of the fire by interrupting the fuel. So that's where you have separation of plants, things like that, fences that bring the fire to the structure. And then when you get to the Zone Zero, you're actually not fighting the fire that's coming through in this direct flame impingement scenario. What you're doing is you're actually looking for ember. And that's what has actually affected the LRA map. And in, the winds and the ember cast that's coming from the WUI and basically producing this heat insult onto your property, and those little nooks and crannies where these embers are lodging and then they're actually catching is, is the thing that they're fighting in the Zone Zero. So that's what the whole zero combustible vegetation. So one of the things you can see, if you go to Paradise, is you can see the programs they have in place where there's an opportunity for the local to start programs or get grant funding and help people make some of these changes, because it doesn't have to be ugly, and it does, it isn't a moonscape. There's an opportunity to have a very refined and attractive Zone Zero. This means that it is important to make sure that you are cognizant of those things that can catch fire. So for example, if you have an area that has a mat that's combustible, you'd want to change it. There are things like potted plants that are part of the Zone Zero definition that are coming up. There's information that'll tell you with more clarity what your requirements are, what your limitations are. It is not currently sitting at no plants. Any plant of a certain size does have an opportunity to be evaluated in the, in the Zone Zero. And large trees, things like that, those are not going to be subject to removal, is, is what it looks like right now on that. So I would say that for anybody who is very concerned about some of these changes, if you go to the Board of Forestry, there's, there's a, and go to Zone Zero, you can see the current draft of Zone Zero and see exactly what it is, and you can actually see the conversation that's been evolving, and you can, you can have a better understanding of the direction we're going. So with that said, I'll sum it up by saying that if there's this heritage plant or this, this prized tree that you have, don't take it out yet. There's opportunity to wait and see exactly what it is. You do have some discretionary time. And for some of the improvements, there is going to be a grace period. So it's important to actually know what the direction is, and we will be trying to make sure that everyone here does understand what it is that needs to be done. And we are going to be reevaluating the actual WUI inspections with Cupertino to make sure that, that information is coming out as well. So nobody wants a moonscape. That is not the direction this is going, and we can provide information and links for the Zone Zero discussion that's going on. That was part of an executive order, but with that, I'll, I'll stop there. So hopefully, I answer your question.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you for a very clear presentation. So thank you for sending out the notices for the property owners that impacted. So for someone who was in a high severity zone and now become very high, that means they, the weed and brush abatement, abatement standard will be more strict? But then there is a grace period of three years to become compliant? Do you, do I have, do you have different standard?
So the, the WUI, are we talking about the WUI inspection, Mayor?
The weed and brush abatement.
The weed and brush abatement standards are set for a 30-foot radius and 100-foot radius, depending on the zone. If you are in the very high, you will get 100-foot radius. It, it is usually focusing on dead and dying material. And if, the further you get from the house, it becomes a little bit more specific, but it's not extremely strict. It just means, it means that within the 30-foot range, they're looking for fuel that's getting a clear path back to your home. In the 30 to 100-foot, anything that would take fire from the ground into the trees, they're called ladder fuels, and then also dead and dying material. And that is, that is the standard for a, an actual WUI inspection or a wild, or a defensible space.
But people will be expecting a stricter standard for that. And if, I see that on your website, there is a request a real estate defensible. And if, I see that on your website, there is a request a real estate defensible space inspection. So can a property owner proactively reach out and get it inspected to make sure they know what to do?
They can. So if, there are two, there are two types of inspections that can be done. The, the, the declaration or the, or that, we call it the AB 38 inspection for a home sale. That one, neither, that one is not a punitive. There's no, there's no enforcement action. It's basically a snapshot of how does your home look in comparison to these standards? It does take into consideration some of the things like home hardening. So do you have a certain type of roof? Do you have the type, right type of windows? Is there a deck? And what is the condition of these things? So it is, it is just for the sale, just like a normal declaration that you would have for a sale for a very high or, so we also have the courtesy inspection, or what we're now starting to call the, the home ignition zone or HIZ assessment. That one is also not a punitive. That's an information-based. It's the type that you would get through like a fire safe or some other organization that really is out there to help. And then we have the ordinance-based or the WUI inspection, which actually does have the potential to be, to have an enforcement action. The only other type that we have that has a, an enforcement action is when a person in the community complains, and that comes in as a complaint inspection. It's treated the same way as, as one of our normal defensible space WUI inspections that we conduct annually.
Okay, so where the homeowners could reach out for the non-punitive ones to be prepared?
So if they, if they ask us, we can, we can send somebody out and County, County Fire can, can do one of those. And we, there is, definitely, it's a different mode, and it's one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we made available, because know that as a resource, it, it should not always be this punitive engagement that we have. And we did get a lot of feedback from that when people started asking, and then we said, "Hey, you have a violation." So we didn't even call it that anymore. We say, "Hey, these are some opportunities for you to actually fix the property."
Yeah, thank you.
That would be the way to go.
So council member one.
Oh, sorry. Real quick question while you're up there. Do we have to rethink our egress routes and also emergency vehicle access in these very high severity zones? Do those change in terms of those maps?
One of the things that will change is anything that's in a very high fire severity zone will be required to follow the 4290. So the 4290 standard, and I think that's where you were getting at, council member.
It is, thank you.
Okay, yeah. So the answer is for those areas, yes, 4290 will apply.
What does that mean, 4290?
So 4290 is also referred to as the minimum fire safe standards. It's indicating, it's basically a set of standards that affects fire access and egress, so that's roads, water supply, signage, and quite honestly, it's just really where a property sits in relation to a fire hydrants or water supply. If there's a dead-end road, those types of things come into play. So there are different standards that are required of those.
Thank you. Council member one.
Question about how this will be practically enforced. If someone didn't know anything about the new maps that were released, would, would the fire marshal or the fire district representative go house to house to take care of the problem or make the resident even aware of the problem?
So I'm, we would probably go social media like anyone else at this point. So social media campaign, we actually do push information, but if you're affected, you're going to get a WUI inspection, and you're going to get that notice via mail, and then you're also going to be having someone contact you. So potentially, yes, someone will come to your home and explain these things. But I think at this point, being clear about what it is, is going to be part of an effort both of not just us, but Cupertino and all the local governments around here. We do want to make sure that people do understand exactly what it is that's required of them. The next big, big push will be the zone zero, which is currently slated to be effective at the beginning of 2026. So that legis, or that definition for zone zero, the first five feet, should be concluded and, and the draft should be finished by the end of the year or December.
Okay, so every homeowner in the, in the red zone will, will get a visit from?
They'll get a letter and they'll get a visit at some point.
Thank you.
Yep. And we definitely could work with Cupertino to make sure that we deliver what it is that people need as soon, because we don't want you the first time to, when you're actually being inspected, that's not the first time we want you to hear about this. So it's, it's our goal as well to make sure that people are well-informed and they have a clear understanding, because we, we don't want anyone to spend any more time or money than they have to.
Thank you. Any more questions? We can go to public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I currently have one request to speak from Community Hall. I see two hands raised requesting to speak virtually. So we have Ken Naylor. Welcome.
Thank you. I, I'm a resident in Rancho Deep Cliff, and I've been trying to find more out about these maps and what's, what's happening, and, and so that's the reason I came down here tonight, just to gain information. I had received some communication from these people, I think, but I didn't make contact. Rancho Deep Cliff is 61 houses on a 15-acre parcel that was built in about 1972 by the rules that were prevalent then. It's predominantly a retired community. Two years ago, State Farm decided they were going to not insure people as much as they did, and so they canceled our policy that we had on the clubhouse and old houses. The board went to California Fair Plan, spent a bunch of money, required another assessment to cover the, those fees, and then changed the CCNRs and said, "Okay, you guys as individuals, get your own policies, the HOA won't get it. They can't get it." So now I'm, as an individual, searching for an insurance policy for my house at what used to be no cost to me, because the board did it, and the HOA fee, I'm looking at $2,000 to $3,000 annually. In addition, we had an assessment to pay for the, the money spent for the fair plan. So these ideas that they're presenting are expensive to people. That's a retirement community. One thing that comes in my mind, how do we compare this? Well, if you drive up Foothill Expressway to El Monte, we're in Los Altos, turn left, go up about one stoplight, and there's another community there that's very similar to ours at Rancho Deep Cliff. We always kind of compare ourselves to that one. They're on the south side of 280 or the bayside of 280. Similar tree coverage, similar properties, everything is, but 280 is protecting them from the hills. In our case, Rancho Deep Cliff is on the wrong side of 280. So I have a mindset now that maybe 280 is the barrier that people like this are looking at to prevent fires from coming down the hillside into, into the towns. And if you live on the wrong side of 280, which we do, maybe we're just out of luck, but you have to, I am just here to say, these things are not cheap. And it's kind of like, you know, swimming upstream, but I wanted to come out and give you that statement, that data. That's what, what, what the impact is in our community.
Thank you, and I just want to double check. I do have a request to speak from Ching Chai. I don't believe this is regarding this item, but you wrote initials SCCPSC?
I wrote it wrong.
Okay. All right, so you don't wish to speak under this item?
Yes.
Oh, okay, very good. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you for the great presentation, and I learned a lot more than the, the notice supposed to send to us. We didn't receive. Fortunately, our neighbor shared the information, so at least I got the information. I, I wrote the comment back online explaining the situation on our street, thinking this might make a difference in the, the, the boundary that has been redrawn, but I'm so surprised to learn that the city can only extend the boundary, not to reduce. So why even ask for our comment, since you guys cannot do anything with it, right? So is there any due process? Meaning, it's for our own good, I understand, but the decision should be done in the correct way. That's why the due process, the word exists, is for the purpose. Cal Fire can just draw the line based on whatever they feel or they determine, but the city council doesn't have any rights. Is this correct? You can only adopt or make it worse for most people who are concerned, right? Is this right, or is this being interpreted incorrectly? Does the law dictate us to adopt and we cannot change? That's my question. I appreciate all the effort of Cal Fire to help make the environment safer, but we don't want something to be arbitrarily done to our property, which change the way we can do with our properties. Nobody wants that. We, we want our freedom to do things to our property within the law, and we don't want that to be changed unilaterally without a due process. I'd like to hear a comment from city council and the city attorney.
Thank you, and now we, we will move to those, we will those, we will move to those members of the public request and to speak virtually. We have two, Peggy Griffin and San Ar. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, city council staff and Cal Fire. Thank you for the presentation. I am encouraged, I was concerned about the trees. Many homes in the wooded areas have trees over their homes because of shade or energy reduction, and also city canopy. And so I'm encouraged, at least from the, the top, that not every tree within 30 feet of a home would have to be taken down. I'd like clarification on that for sure. Also, what about public properties like Monovista Rec area and McClellan Ranch? If those all have to be addressed with this new map, then are the expenses to do this put in the budget? Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have San Ar. Welcome, San.
Evening, Mayor Chow and council members. The residents on Linda Vista Drive and west of Linda Vista Drive will all be subject to this red designation of very high severity fire hazard, and so we ask council to be very careful in deliberating on this item. And if you need to, please continue the item and, and see what you can do to take actions on this offline if you have to. Please do not accept this as, as proposed. There are several concerns here that I want to point out. The first is, I would have liked the staff report, which I saw rather late, to include the process for a Cal Fire appeal that as a council body, you should be hopefully able to do. However, I don't see any clarity in the presentation on whether the Cal Fire comment window has expired, and if so, what can be done by council. I ask you to press as hard as you can on all of the options to make this least punitive to your residents that have long lived in this area, and, and these map changes don't materially change the hazard. The real hazard that is not mentioned in this report is that the county owns the lands to the west of these areas, and the county land that is owned by Lehigh Permanent Quarry, for example, is not being maintained, because Lehigh Permanent is not currently operating the property, and there's a lot of foliage there that is not being maintained for fire readiness. And so I'm even more concerned by some of the ordinance language that talks about exempting lands that are lands for habitat and various other such things. So specifically, the biggest list is the lands to our west, and those need to be maintained for fire safety. And that involves collaborating with the county and working with the quarry and enforcing very strictly that the quarry's lands are being maintained, so that that is not the starting point, and then ember spread from there. So what we do as homeowners in Linda Vista and west is not going to save this neighborhood. What will save this neighborhood is your action with the county and with the quarry. And then on the, on the zoning changes and the code changes, I would request you to consider if you can limit it to new construction only, and for improvements to existing properties to be as liberal as possible, because homeowners have lived here for years and decades, and this condition is not going to materially change, except for the big unknown, which is the quarry closing. So hopefully, you can appeal to Cal Fire, you can look at options to make this as liberal on the residents. And then on the trees, we need the trees to protect the soil. Without the trees, we'd have landslides on these hillsides. But please consider the risk of landslides. These laws don't think about the landsliders. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Thank you. So could we answer some of the questions from the resident? First, what's the due process for Cal Fire to adopt this map? There was a public hearing period before they adopt, right? Could you clarify that? And is there a way to appeal the designation? Are we past that deadline? Maybe there was an appeal period?
I'm not sure whether there is an appeal period at, at this point. I know the government code, section 51179, is what lays out that you have 120 days, cities, to adopt the map from the time that it's issued. And that government code section also specifies that you can't downgrade a property, say, which we tried to cover, that you can't go from very high to high, high to moderate, or remove a property. So I don't know if there is a direct appeal to Cal Fire on this, but the maps that they prepared are essentially their maps. Cities have the ability to add properties. We could adjust to the property lines, which we've recommended, but in terms of removing or downgrading properties, cities don't have that latitude. And I'm not sure if the city attorney may have some idea with, if there were an appeal to Cal Fire itself as a state agency, I'm not sure how that would work.
Maybe the fire department has sent the information on appeal?
There is no appeal.
There is no appeal?
No.
Okay.
It was spelled out in the government code. They're very clear, and it basically says, "You, within 30 days of receipt, must post, make a public comment available. 120 days of that same date, you have to adopt. You cannot modify it to a lesser degree." It does actually say that there is no appeal, or you can't plead to Cal Fire to have a change, to modify the map. And it does say that the, once the ordinance is, is adopted, that it gets sent through, and the acknowledgement that it's been accepted is effectively them saying, "We got your..."
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm limited in time. So another question was about trees within 30 feet. What can, can, how, where can people find information about what trees do not need to be taken down?
So if you, thank you for the question, Mayor. That's actually a great opportunity to tell people exactly where to look. So if you go to Cal Fire's website and you look up defensible space, they have an entire page that's dedicated to the different zones, the different types of orientations. The, the zero to five, zone zero, is the only area where they say that the non-combustible. They do, and you will see in the final zone zero that, that this does not include mature trees, at least in the current draft. So they are making a, they are recognizing that a, a very mature, fully grown tree trunk is not going to ignite like a small bush. So this, this is actually something that is taken into account. Because it's not finalized yet, I will direct you to the Board of Forestry and say, to look up specifically the zone zero, the current draft is what you're looking for. It's called a plea, I think, is what it is, and there's two versions of it. There's one that happened as a result of the March meeting, and then there's one that was created as a result of the June meeting or the, the May meeting, so...
So people can still provide input, because they are still adopting?
So that process is still open. So that process is still open. Uh, there are quite a few people that have been, um, going through and representing exactly these same positions, uh, from, uh, various positions. So yes, that, that process is still underway. Um, it is possible to go to Board, Board of Forestry and, and log in and have them send you information. I don't believe they're going to have another session, but you can actually see videos and everything up to that point. And most people's positions are probably going to be represented in there. There's a lot of video content and a lot of information.
So I've limited the time. How about public properties? How will they be addressed?
So this is, uh, largely for, for any properties that have structures is what, what we're looking for in our inspections. There are requirements for open space and others, and those are managed through usually your, we debate in your counties and other ordinances. So those are not exempt from, from, uh, the requirements. They just are handled differently because they're basically public entities. Um, you'll see that, uh, PG&E, for example, they have an entire division that's dedicated to the fuel management and there's an opportunity to take a look and ta, contact them to find out what it is that they're working on. We also have through the CWPP, some of the projects that are identified for open space and some of the others. So, um, I don't think it's proper, it's appropriate or correct to say that none of these spaces are being addressed. There are a lot of different, um, mechanisms in place that are actually creating, um, how much and exactly to what extent varies.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I would encourage the members of the public to send in us questions in writing and then maybe we can then get more, um, answers on them. Any other, anyone else have comments?
I actually have a quick one. I just want to know, how would you add a property to the list? Is it a data-driven process or the city just adds it?
So, um, for, for clarification, council member, is that if we were to add a property or a parcel to the very high, how would that process work?
Yeah, does the city do that or do you do that? Or is it working together that we determine?
It's actually working together, right on track there. So what, what has happened, um, is, and we've done this for, for some of our other served jurisdictions, we'll get a list of, usually it's road centric, so, um, it's tying to evacuation routes or the potential for that. It isn't usually this property, this property, this property. It's just zones or areas. So the, uh, local jurisdiction will say, I'm concerned about this, escape routes. I'm concerned about heavy vegetation in very hilly areas, um, areas that have very windy roads. These are all actual examples of things that we've gone out and looked for. And so we were given information to go out and drive different areas. So, uh, we went out, we took a close look at these areas and we made evaluations. And what we were doing is we were evaluating whether the presence of the recognized mitigation or the recognized challenge or, or weakness of that area did exist. And then finally, we were also asked for an operational, uh, evaluation of whether there was a strategic operational advantage to saying this was a higher designation area. We used this information and we gave it to the local, um, staff members and said, uh, these were our findings. And they used it as a variable in making the overall decision. So that's the process that we used. We used it with at least three jurisdictions.
Thank you. I'd love to talk to you more because I think there's some concerns by residents on the protected bike lanes that are making escape routes a little more difficult. They're worried about that.
Hmm, okay.
Thank you.
Bike lanes that are being used as escape routes?
Yeah.
We would always recommend that people use vehicles to escape.
I understand that. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Um, so I think we can, um, move that the clerk read the title of ordinance number twenty-five dash two-two-seven-two, that further reading of the ordinance be waived and that the city council conduct the first reading of the ordinance by title only.
Second.
Okay, um, if I may, I have one more question from the residents, so.
Take my time.
So there was a question about the building code on, so I think the staff says the, our, our mini code didn't have different standard for building code between moderate, high and very high. And now with the adopted, uh, red resolution, I still didn't see there is difference between do we, with, uh, if we adopt ordinance, would there be different building code requirement for someone who is moving from high to very high, for example?
For high, high and very high, it's going to be treated the same, which is how it has been since two thousand and nine.
So there is no building code change?
The change, the changes in the ordinance would apply to both of those fire hazard zones, high and very high.
Oh, but for moderate and high, there is a difference now?
Moderate, I do not believe is covered as of yet. It's a designation on the map, but it is not applied to the building code standards at this time.
I guess my question is, would, is the building code adopted in the res, resolution the same as the current one? Is, is there a change in standard?
Wow.
Once we adopt this?
To chapters seven, sixteen, seven, four and sixteen, four, zero, yes.
Hmm, so what exactly was changed? Because I see the map.
Yes.
But if I may, um, Mayor Pugosh, um, I just wanted to mention that currently the, the changes that you're seeing right now are purely to adopt the maps and any reference to the maps. The building code changes as there is, as they stem from the adoption of these maps are not in effect yet. I mean, there's certain standards that are applicable, but a new code cycle will bring in possibly new standards for moderate zones that you, the question that you're asking. Currently, there's nothing applicable to moderate zones.
Um, but currently there, um, I, for, for the high and very high, adopting this resolution, does that strengthen, um, the current building code for, for them or not? The building code stays the same?
Yeah, what's really the change is the map itself. So you have properties that are now being added through this map that were not on there at all and you have some properties that were coming off.
Yeah, but then how's, how does, uh, if I'm a property that I, I was in the high severity zone, now it's changed to very high. What's changed if I need to build a new house now?
So as it stands today, um, the same standards apply to very high and high.
And?
As the map stands today. And so if you are now in the, still in the high or very high zone, the same building standards would apply.
Okay, so it's, uh, in, in case anyone is moved from moderate to high, then their building standard would have, will be changed?
Correct.
Okay. Um, then this, does it matter whether it's a existing building or a new building? Or maybe they are doing a renovation, they would now need to comply to a?
It only applies to new construction altogether or what is considered new construction if it's a major enough remodel where it's considered new construction?
So existing building is not affected?
As far as building standards.
Right, there's no retroactive going back. If you have an existing house and you're leaving it as is, you're not getting a new building permit for anything. That's going to remain intact.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. So any more, no more questions, then we can vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Um.
The changes, the changes that occurred for your house, for the, is in your fire. If you go from something to the high, you'll have a great deal of difficulty getting fire cut.
Oh, yeah, the fire insurance, uh.
Same bar.
Yeah.
Still doesn't settle.
I know, but then the insurance rate increase happened even before this high fire severity zone. So please, uh, email any question to the city council, city council.
May I suggest a bio break?
Yeah, a break, please.
Um, okay, let's take a five minute break. Then we can talk.